But as we said here, the secretary may consider, may, hindi po siya absolute. Because even as of today, when we have this current IRR, it also happens that the secretary has a different view of the transaction than the third-party independent party. May ibang view ang possible sa secretary, office of the secretary dun sa independent board. Naturally, because the secretary knows more about the technology that it funded than the independent board who are actually parties who are not in any way have any knowledge about the technology than even the proposed licensee. So talaga ko minsan, nakakalokos nila ng different views. Sige sir.
Given these ideas, does it mean that after receiving the comments in the form of the FOR report and the written recommendation by the DUS secretary, it still boils down to the decision of the university president to either to go on or not with the transaction?
Yes, yes. Now if you will follow the recommendation of the FOB and there will be co-op findings, then you can use it na sa opinion. If you will not follow the recommendation of the FOB or of the secretary and there is a co-op basis, then it is your own justification you did not. So parang kalulang to 'yo. Yes sir?
Ang ano saan nito kanina is, when you request for fairness opinion report, you already have an agreement with your university. But you have not signed agreement yet. So it's still dependent on the opinion.
Actually sir, you already signed the agreement, but if there is an, there is in that opinion saying na merong problema dun sa pinamayo, you can still renegotiate.
Pwede ba? Well, it may not be hard for us to...
Kaya nga po ang advice namin, instead of the licensing agreement, term sheet. Kasi anyway, financial terms lang namang po ang tinitignan. At, tinitignan ng FOB, 'yung financial terms. So at least do the term sheet, focusing on the financial terms, 'yun lang ipasubmit for evaluation sa FOB. And then, kung sabihin ng FOB, your royalty rate is less than the minimum prescribed by industry standards, you need to renegotiate with your licensee na kailangan naming taasan ito to 1% because we are below minimum standard. Kung may ganong foundation FOB?
Wala pa lang sa iwan institution, it's the one who signed the contract, the president. Kung minsan, may ang president to sign.
Sino po sir?
Siguro 'yung tech transfer.
Ang licensing agreement sir, ang tech transfer officer. Basta ko sino po 'yung may authority to sign agreements? Pero usually po pag-SUCs mga presidents po ang nakasign. Hindi po mga tech transfer officers. It's the university president who signs agreements. Yes sir?
Actually, I just wonder how, why is it that way? Because we are trying to have a full force of the law. So since we are doing this fairness opinion report, why not make it as a, I don't know, either that would be the basis, man, sa ano, the present adult secretary? Why, it might give us confusion for this, actually. Now we are being required to have that fairness opinion board?
You need to undergo the process, but you don't need to follow the recommendation. Parang you need to undergo the process, ganun po ang... I just want to explain, kasi mahaba po the deliberation ni TWG to no? Um, the law, the law actually states na you need to obtain a fairness opinion report. Wala pong sinabi doon sa law that that fairness opinion report has to be approved by the secretary. Na ilagay po 'yan doon sa aming policy, sa aming DOST IP policy, where the secretary is given a veto power to approve and deny the independent third-party's opinion on a particular transaction. So there lies the problem in the implementation, where in a sense na iba ang view ni secretary doon sa independent third-party. Ang nangyayari, ibinabalik 'yung opinion ng third-party sa third-party independent para, para ireevaluy uli, para mabago uli. And there lies 'yung influencing na the third-party independent opinion. Supposedly independent party sila, they should not be in any way be influenced in making their opinion. Kasi supposedly they are not biased, they are not interested in the technology, they have no conflict of interest. Sila 'yung third independent body expressing an opinion on a particular transaction. So, ah, in the deliberation of the TWG, we tried to correct this current system wherein the secretary approves the recommendation of... Parang nangyayari, the third-party independent board is just recommendatory. Where in fact, the law says you secure a fairness opinion report from independent third-party. You do not secure a fairness opinion report from the secretary. What you secure from the secretary, according to the law, is a written recommendation. So therefore, in that sense, the third-party opinion is their opinion, not influenced by any other party. The written recommendation that is coming from the secretary because he has some knowledge about the tech... Definitely, siya ang secretary po ng doon, siya na pondo. Siya po 'yung DOST head. So meron po siyang alam about the technology. Hindi na na siya makuconsider na independent, no conflict of interest whatsoever. Because definitely has interest on the technology. Magkay-iba 'yung kanila objective with the independent. So in that case, there is a written recommendation coming from the secretary as to his views as regards the proposed transaction. So these two retorts, you will have to secure just to serve as your basis in deciding whether you will go for this transaction or not. Just a basis, but it will not compel you to make, compel you to agree with their opinion or recommendation. 'Yun po 'yung ano dyan, 'yun po 'yung essence nung ating amendments in the law and the IRR. So, um, tama 'yung sinabi ni sir kanina, from the private side, we own the IP. Why should we ask somebody else to command us how to transact with a private or with our potential licensee? Because we are the owner, we should have a leeway. Based on the IP code, the owner can do whatever he wants in the technology. Nganak po, pag publicly funded 'yung technology na 'yan, may public funds involved, dadaan po tayo sa commercial and audit review. And since we did not, we did not follow the procurement process in selecting our licensee, 'yung other process na pinaklo natin, 'yung FOB process. Mamimili po kasi kayo sir, if you do not want to go to the process of securing FOB or FOB or ano 'yan, FOR, then you go to the procurement process. Ayos bidder po kayo. Yes sir?
Even the opinions from the FOB as well as from the DUS, and that will be given to, of course, the requesting party and for the suit, that will be the university president. And suppose the opinions are different from, opposing to the licensee, suppose. Parang hindi siya, hindi siya favorable sa licensee. And yet, the university president still decide to post through the commercialization of the licensee. Will that be a ground for AUM, for, from the commission audit? Not having the opinions?
Definitely, it's an audit observation. Audit observation lang po 'yan. But in all audit observation, can always be justified by the end user. Pwede, pwede niyo po majustify kung bakit hindi niyo po pinalo 'yung recommendation or 'yung opinion. Kasi posible po na hindi, hindi na cover nung FOB or perhaps nang written recommendation ni secretary, 'yung point niyo o 'yung, 'yung reason, 'yung justification. Either mangpalok po siya doon sa FOR or doon sa written recommendation. At least in any way, meron siyang basis. In any, in any way, pwede siyang... Pwede po kasing 'yung recommendation ni secretary positive, 'yung recommendation ng board negative. Okay? Kasi tinitignan lang po ng board financial. Ang tinitignan ni secretary is more than the financial, meaning the socioeconomic impact of transferring this technology to the other party. Doon nakakaroon ng sali, salungat na opinion kasi 'yung dalawa. So anyway, ano po ba ang mahalaga? Di ba 'yung inalawang sinabi ka na kanina, money po ba? Commercialization po ba? Or just to help improve Filipino, ah, the lives of the Filipino? Kasi perhaps doon sa secretary's written recommendation, doon makitita na while the licensee only pays you 100,000, but the future economic impact of transferring this technology to this licensee will go beyond this number, then you might as well go with the secretary's recommendation. Kasi definitely 'yung, 'yung FOB recommendation, masyado po sa script lang doon sa financial terms, sasabihin nila ay your royalty is less than the minimum standards. So you have to increase royalty, eh, hindi napataayig for renegotiation 'yung licensee niyo. In this manner, meron po kayong lewe po sinususundin? Actually, at least may, basta po may sinunod kayo, 'yun lang. Unless, kung wala kayong sinunod sa pamayro, eh, kayo na po, be ready with your own justification, ganun po 'yun. Kasi meron po 'yung tinitignan na, o, walang royalty hinigay, ang hiningi lang aprat pi. For example po, 50,000 lang hiningi aprat, wala ng royalty. And the license is for five years. So sasabihin ng board, that is unfair to the government. Kasi ang tinignan nila 'yan is the financial terms. Possibly doon sa report ni secretary sabihin, bakit will generate how many employment? It will generate employment, it will help increase poverty, whatever, alleviation? Oh, so, another aspect na hindi po nakita ng board, kasi limited nga lang po 'yung review ng board to financial. So at least you... Sabihin niyo na guys ako, well, we opted to follow the recommendation of the secretary because this is the main objective of the research. Or, pinalo 'yung FOB because you want to incentivize researchers. Either way, you are safe, kung meron kayong pinalo. Clarify na po ba 'yung process?
Di pa try 'yung sa opinyon na walang libidla libre. Sinaglaregato lang naman 'yung private.
Sir, pag ganyan nga kasi po 'yung reason niyo, wala kayong ibinibenta libre, actually 'yung FOB, sasabihin not fair to the government, eh. Sasabihin bakit linibre niyo 'yan? Sasabihin dapat nangingika dyan ng 1% royalty, sasabihin po 'yan ng FOB. Based on our experience po sir ah, as secretariat, hindi po nila nakita 'yung, 'yun na nga po, 'yung other aspect na may big, pakapublic po dyan just to improve the lives, yeah?
Meron akong ask question dyan. Kasi, it's a funded, government funded project, na kung maaccompens na naman 'yung project ito, it will also benefit the end users who are farmers or... So, in that case, the technology is protected with an IP, like a patent. And then, meron tong licensee who is a government entity, we don't get any royalty, we don't get a licensing fee. So it's really libre 'yan, kasi ano sila, government. Pwede ba 'yan? Wala kaming makikita dyan, wala kaming... But if, if it's a private company who is interested in our technology, launching it, but no commercialization sa technology namin, then we get, we get a licensing fee as well as royalty.
So pwede naman po 'yun, depende po 'yun sa LG o sa strategy niyo po.
'Yung FOB will not say that it's unfair to the government.
Usually po, pag government to government nagdzaan, hindi po siya magisabi ng unfair, kasi both are government. Pareho pong government ano ang nag-uusap. Parang agency to agency po, negotiated procurement. Ganun lang po 'yun. Mas mabilis po tayo sa procurement process, pag agency to agency, government agency to government agency nagtransact. Pero kung government agency to private entity, doon po medyo makakapuproduksyon ng procurement. Similarly sa FOB po, pag government to government po ang licensee, licensor, ah, wala pong FOB process na akong ginagawa dyan, hindi na po...
Kasi pag, pag, ng exclusive license, eh. My government is interested, my, my private...
Both, both.
Pero sir, bakit, bakit ito, although kahit na siya may resolution kung may... Pero, ano 'yun, siya ang magpuproduce. Siya ang may capacity na... 'Yung, eh, licensee na...
Eh, ano, government, it's a, so it's a... It's a government, like BIFAR for example, they're developing a technology for culture.
So by proprietary...
A proprietary to the RDI.
Ah, mandate share.
Yeah, but it's a government funded project, we are doing. So the product of what, the technology that they produce is given to the, to the, to the end user who are stakeholders of the government. So we promised them to give this technology free, because your, the end, the end sharing or our marginalize the transaction.
That's why po we recommend po doon sa mga ganyan pong klase na huwag na po mag-exigent ng licensing agreement. Mo, memorato mo ang agreement talang po. Kasi tal, wala na po kayo financial na pinag-uusapan dyan sa license na 'yan eh.
Is, is na siguro, kung, kung ano siya ano, private...
Kung private, licensing agreement kayo. Pero kung government ang kausap, magmowa na lang po kayo.
Pag payment, magmowa na lang po kayo. Para kayo may exchange na mga interests, para may resources. Para kayo... Hindi siya commercial transaction. Kasi proposed commercial transaction, sinasabi sa FOB. Pag makikita rin, hindi siya commercial transaction. Wala naman mga payment, mga licensees. Wala naman ang exchange na resources. Therefore, common, we must overcome this. How?
Yeah, because the reason for protecting it, because it could be also used in other countries. Same technology can be also using it.
Okay, do you have more questions? None, then we shall proceed. Section 7. Criteria for Fairness. The Fairness Opinion Board may render its fairness opinion based on the fairness to the GFA of the proposed transaction, particularly its financial terms. The board may also be guided whenever applicable by the following criteria: A. Financial capability of the licensee and its ability to sustain. B. Competitive position of the licensee. C. Marketability of the product or service that shall be produced from the subject technology. And D. Such other criteria as may be determined by the board. Any comment? Yes sir? Um, section 7. Um, the such other criteria as may be determined by the board, it's bounded by the financial terms. Is that a legal issue sir?
Yes, yes, it is confined with the financial terms.
Okay? Any more question? None? Okay, section 8. Contents of the Fairness Opinion Report. The report shall include, but not be limited to, a review and analysis of the proposed transaction, financial statements, industry information, economic conditions and assumptions used therein, and a comparison of similar transactions. Section 9. The DOST secretary shall issue a written recommendation for the proposed transaction in the following manner: Letter A. Upon receipt of the written request from the receiving office, the DOST secretary shall forward the same to his or her duly authorized representative through a special order for review and his/her consideration. Any comment? Next. B. The written recommendation may cover areas such as technical and legal aspects of the written request. It may also consider areas that may not be covered by the Fairness Opinion Board. And C. The DOST secretary at his discretion may use the Fairness Opinion Report as basis for the written recommendation. No comments? Section 10. Consolidation. Yes sir?
Pwede ba lang dyan din ang may not? May or may not?
May or may not?
May or... Noted sir. Section 10. Consolidation of Reports. The Technology Application and Promotion Institute shall serve as the depository institution of all issued fairness opinion reports by the Fairness Opinion Board and written recommendation by the DOST secretary. It shall keep an active registry of all forwarded documents for whatever purpose that the DOST secretary may deem appropriate. Yes sir? 'Yung sinasabi bang TAPI dito is TAPI sa regional level or...
National level.
So, sino 'yung mag-forward ng, sa regional? May, may flow ba dito na...
Supposedly once, ah, 'yung FOR, FOB reports is regionalized, di po ba? Kanina sinabi ko. Written recommendation from the secretary is central, talaga is secretary po 'yun. So the reports will be forwarded, all of which will be forwarded to the central agency called TAPI, who will consolidate all these reports coming from all regions. Because there might come a time that the secretary will have a need for this information. Hindi niya kailangan umuna sa mga region just to get the information. It will all be centralized to one agency, that is TAPI. Yes sir, actually, the confidentiality as I give by the TWG during our deliberation is while pending evaluation. However, once a recommendation has already been issued by the FOB and the written recommendation has already been issued by the secretary, this will now become public documents for transparency.
Just a review lang. 'Yung requesting party magsusubmit ng request sa regional office and it will be, of course, first through the central office, the UST, and so on with the TAPI, and the processes go on. After that, we have here, we already have, the TAPI already have the, or who will have the, the report of the Fairness Opinion Board and the written recommendation of the DUST.
You, the requesting part, the requesting party will get their report?
Kukuha direkta sa regional or sa, sa national, saan niya kukunin?
Ni requesting party? Hindi po niya kukunin, ibigay po sa kanya, papadala po sa inyo.
Sino 'yung mapapadala?
Regional office na po 'yun.
Okay, so kumbaga, with the FOR and the written documentation ba balik sa process, sa line, and then 'yung regional office 'yung magbigyan?
Because the regional office will be the secretary to the board. So siya, nasa kanila po talaga 'yung report.
Okay, just to be clear.
Yes, ah, so, 'yun po. Example, the written recommendation na mga galing sa central office to DOST may kakasuke to the region. 'Yung FOR, FOB, nandun na talaga sa region. Kasi nandun na 'yung board natin sa region. Wala na sa central office.
Some more questions? None? Entire Rule 12, Common Provisions, No Revision. Court. Management of IPs from RND performed by government RDIs through their own budget. Rule 12 and Rule 14, No Revisions. Chapter 5, Revenue Sharing. Rule 15, No Revision. Yes sir? Ah, I, I'm sorry, I forgot pala na, na regionalization na talag, na palayosan. So, ah, 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 regional office or the DUS will do the, um, kumbagan 'yung information ng FOB to, to create the FOR. However, the written recommendation will still be coming from the DUS secretary. Pero para, for consolidation, all the FOR and the written communication of the DUS secretary will be forwarded also as a copy to the TAPI. Chapter 6. Commercialization by the researcher and establishment of spin-off firms. Rule 16? Ah, yes sir?
I've been reading Rule 16, and basically, this is kind of ethical issues. Because if we allow, if the president will allow the researcher to be a part of the spin-off firm, that one will be, he will be receiving another salary. Another one, he will be receiving double salary. So our message is, ah, that should be optional or supposedly, ah, ganun ba sa... May, may na lang. Hindi, kasi pag sinabi siya, may or may not. Kasi submit, eh, submit ito sa Act 12, eh. Kung may ethical standard, eh.
Actually sir, ah, your concern, that's why we did not make any revision here because it's still in the law forward. Na, by lo po ito, hindi po nami magalaw. Kasi nga, nasa batas po 'yan, word for word. But as regards your concern, wala pong double compensation dito. Once the university allows the researcher to spin-off, kasi the researcher need to take a leave of absence, and that is without pay. Hindi po, talaga required po talaga na without pay, and magiging. Unless 'yung ang kanyang, ang kanyang participation in the spin-off firm is just a consultant. Kasi kung consultant, ang requirement naman po is limited authority to practice. Kasi as a consultant, you don't need to be rendering full-time service in, ah, to the spin-off. So pwede po kayo, pwede lang po siya mag-request ng limited authority to practice. It's professional as a consultant to the spin-off firm. Pero kung magiging officer siya, incorporated siya, board director siya doon spin-off firm, he needs to take a leave of absence for a minimum of, ah, maximum of two years, that is without pay, sir. that is without pay, sir. And we will be no double compensation here. So, mamimili si researcher. Wala kang sela ng dalawang taon, struggling 'yung aking spin-off. Pero at least, struggling pero may brighter future dahil na tutukman niya being the, uh, the one who develops the technology. Then after two years, balik siya sa university. He leaves now the spin-off. He leaves the, the spin-off firm with capable hands lang. Kasi nagawa niya na 'yung part niya na, naitayo ang spin-off firm and uh, he can na, he can just, ano na lang, royalty out of it, di ba?
Yes, sir?
Our well-being requirement, the researcher employees to take leave of absence if he serves in the capacity as employee or officer, officer employee in spin-off firm. So, kung incorporated lang siya sa stockholder consultant, hindi siya kailangan magtake leave of absence.
In that case, kung he will become an employee of the spin-off company, it will be a big risk on his part because the company may not earn anything yet within the two years of being involved in that company.
Yes, nasa discretion po niyo.
So, kung kailangan na wala siyang, he has to take a leave of absence without pay, paano 'yan papabuhay ang researcher?
Well, nasa decision ng researcher of the university.
Pero, will that be at the discretion of the institution? To pay him while he's on it?
Basta government found it, applicable in RA10755, yun naman provisions on spin-off firm and participation, huh? Researcher alone.
Pero kung salami niya is coming from the university, why it prevented by?
Pag-private ang university. You can allow your researcher to spin off at the same time, just uh, allow them to receive salary without leave of absence. Kasi...
Because, yes, sir, the spin-off company...
Pwede din. Sir?
In the start, the spin-off company may be earning yet.
Yes, sir, that is correct. So, if it's a private university, I think may mas, mily wing. Kasi, 'yung spin-off firm, uh, pwede naman siyang mag-commercialize ng all you want technology that is funded by, pwede rin siyang, aside from that, meron pang ibang technology na pwede niya commercialize funded by university, the private university. In that case, pwede siya.
Pero, how can it encourage the, in the case of uh, government, state universities, in the case of state universities, how can it encourage faculty to be part of the spin-off company? Kung wala sa salami ng matanggap na, they may not earn the company? Iba na, makin, sabihin na? How to use?
Um, pwede, in, 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 marami po kasing capacity para maging part ng spin-off company sa researcher. So, decision po niya, kung gusto niya, siya 'yung tututo. Pwede naman po kasi siya as stockholder lang, hindi siya magtake take ng leave of absence.
Ah, naman po siya ang inventor, daw.
Opo. So, pwede po kasi as inventor, pero consultant, hindi niya po kailangan ng hundred percent full-time dun sa spin-off company. So, di, na, so it still, uh, depends on the researcher. Kung gusto niya ng full-time tutok dun sa company, he has to sacrifice his salary. But pwede rin naman po na 'yung kanyang capability 'yung ibibigay niya sa company as, as consultant, not as employee full-time. Or pwede rin naman po as stockholder lang, so hindi niya kailangan magtake take ng leave of absence. So, depende po sa passion of the researcher, ano 'yung kanya talaga, uh, both of ano, i-request naman po kasi niya 'yan sa university. Siya magsasabi kung ano'ng klase, uh, ano 'yung magiging standing niya dun sa spin-off na pinupost.
Actually, what's up, what's up sa ano niya? Your baby niya?
And usually, not all inventors has the commercial ano, capability to do so. Dun po 'yung nag-studying dyan kasi focus niya, siya 'yung mag-commercialize but wala din siya 'yung, 'yung ano, 'yung entrepreneurial capability to do so. So, uh, the university has to decide. Anyway, this is university's IP, not the researcher's IP.
Yeah, I agree, ma'am. Kasi, if, if the technology is, is created along with, with the duty and responsibility of the faculty with the university, then the technology is, is owned by the university and, and the faculty has no right to do the spin-off. Although, he can, he can opt to have the spin-off, but of course, with the respect to having the leave of absence. Kasi pag, pag nag-spin-off siya, magagamit 'yung, niya, 'yung kanyang oras sa spin-off. Yung oras ng university is ginagamit niya sa spin-off, so therefore, it's again a mandatory of uh, of the...
Okay. Due to that constraint, we shall fast track the reading. Okay, chapter six. Commercialization by researcher and establishment of spin-off firms. The entire chapter has no revision. Chapter seven. Used by the government, compulsory licensing and assumption of potential IPRs. No revision. Chapter eight. Under Rule 22, second paragraph. Professional fees shall be included in the computation of costs and expenses in, but not limited to IP management, technology transfer activities, technology licensing offices operations, research and development projects, and science and technology capability building programs. Any comment? None? Chapter nine. Institutional mechanism. No revision. Chapter ten. Dispute resolution. No revision. And chapter eleven, the last chapter, miscellaneous transitory and final provisions. No revision. Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
I think that's IPO, the last one, IPO, side trade.
Yes, subject to the mediation and arbitration rules of the IPO.
I think it's still IPO.
It's still IPO, Intellectual Property Office because it depends, kung saan po 'yung potential ninyo, meron kasi kung minsan kayo physical application na may national phase entry kayo na sa ibang bansa. So, 'yung magko-governmentary arbitration rules, suposidin eh, is kung ano Intellectual Property Office nung bansa na yun, kaya IPO lang po 'yung nakanalayin, sir. We do not limit the arbitration rules dun sa IPO field. As in envision natin, meron kayong commercialization record abroad.
Who, who did you notice the professional fees? See, DSD, oh? The, the uh, support?
Ah, kayo po yan, siya, the university. Ayun po, nagideetermine po, magkano po 'yung professional fee nyo? Dun sa mga, yung sinasabi niyo po ba, 'yung sa FOB experts? O saan po bang?
Parang, parang ganun.
Yung sa FOB experts po, ang nagideetermine, ang nagideetermine po niya, 'yung ating, um, DOSMC circular number one. Nandun po 'yung rates nung fee per meeting nung FOB. Pero 'yung other professional fees...
Where would you transfer?
Kayo po yan, sa inyong po policy, sa Technology Transfer Protocol niyo po, pwede po kayo maka-identify kung magkano po 'yung inyong limits dun sa inyong professional fees. Dependeng po, of course, sa inyong pera sa budget, valuation.
Yes, sir?
Matanong ko lang, ma'am. Sa ngayon or existing, uh, magkano 'yung ginabayaran pag tumukuha ka ng, or nagre-request ka ng FOR?
So, it's 5,900 per, per head, per meeting? Tatlo ang number po ng board, tatlo. So, 5,900 times three per meeting. So, kung fast track, isang meeting lang po yun. So, yun 'yung, magkano, 5,900 times three, mga fifteen, one of fifteen, thousand? Kung fast track, one day evaluation, one meeting. Even the ten-day evaluation, one meeting lang din po yun. Pero kung full-blown, 'yung sixty-day evaluation natin, umaabot po sila dyan ng maximum o five meetings. Pero kung bago po 'yung mga boards, six meetings. Kasi 'yung first meeting is mere, uh, more on orientation of the board. Orientation of the board on the rules, on the transaction, on the documents, on the signing of the statement of no conflict of interest. Yung mga administrative matters po 'yung first meeting. The second meeting or third meeting is on the visit with either licenser or licensee. So, kung within one, kung mag-aagree si licenser or licensee to meet in one day, pwede nating mas bisyon. So, one meeting lang. Pero kung minsan, yun na nga po 'yung problema na si licensee, pagka-layo-layo ang planta na dun sa Batangga, tapos si licenser naman ay nanito, example, sa NCR, sa Manila, usually. So, it's impossible, ala lang kung south and north kung ang punta, na hindi po makakareng ng one meeting. So, magdalawang meeting, busy to licenser or licensee. Then the fourth and the fifth meeting is on the deliberation of the board based on their findings on the, on the visits and interview with the licenser and the licensee. And the last meeting is the finalization of the report. So, ganun po kahaba 'yung proseso pinataanan po ng board.
So, to summarize, uh, more likely, if we consider a full-blown, that's 5,900 and then that's uh, about six meetings, so that's about...
5,900 times three...
Six thousand times three eighteen, so suppose twenty...
Hundred, six thousand, two hundred. Or honorariums of the board. Does not include the representation, the food, the... pamasahay, accommodation, kung malayo po 'yung mga experts nyo, meron pong pa 'yan pamasahay.
That will range from one fifty to two hundred.
Yeah, around that, around that.
So, with, with regionalization...
That one will be listed, definite.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sa ngayon po...
Sino pala 'yung...
Requesting party po ang nakalagay dun sa, dito po sa implementing rules sa regulation natin, it is the requesting party who shoulders all the costs. Ngayon po, uh, until 2019, next year, meron pa pa tayong funding coming from DOST. So, hindi ko pa po ala kung itutuloy po ng DOST funding, 'yung request for Fairness Opinion Board, but this time, course through na to the regional office. Kasi sa ngayon, nasa akin po 'yung funding, kasi kami 'yung secretariat. But definitely, it will be regionalized. The funds will now go to the respective regions.
Yan, kasi uh, bago lang 'yung, 'yung tech transfer sa, sa almost lahat ng ISUSSs. Yung, of course, yung meron mga iba na nag, uh, nagpa-tech transfer na. And then, because bago, hindi ba siya nalagay sa budget? Parang ganun, na may kailangan sa budget. So, therefore, um, we try to consider kung magkano 'yung isang FOR, at least para ma, malagay namin sa action plan namin kung ilan 'yung i, para sa aksa iba.
Could the fees be also embedded in the projects?
Yes, sir. Actually, the other funding agencies of those, if you will request, they would already know that, in the... As long as you know na may commercial potential. Yung patututuhan do, kaya kayo nagre-request ng fees for FOB kasi magco-commercialize kayo. So, definitely, the, 'yung mga councils po namin nagbibigay, etapos si sir pala uwi per card.
Si sir, kasi niya lang po ba kalyo nagpa-funding?
So, i-imagine namin 'yung sana, project po po sa namin, uh, raise of one hundred fifty to one thousand. Pag may commercial potential, so na ba 'yun?
Okay? Do you have any question? More questions, Pa? None? Uh, yes, sir?
Um, during the consultation conducted by IPO field uh, together with EDG last year, um, one of the common problems that we had presented is uh, that, um, many of us ISUSSs have, have no definite budget, um, offices. So...
The ESO ba yun, sir?
Uh... Yung Intellectual Property Management Office. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ang ESO is a big part of the particular office. Because uh, in our case, absolutely, we have the ESO division and then the Technology Transfer Division. So, one of the common problems that we had presented, wala po kami specific budget. Uh, we just depend on the budget of the research and extension. So, 'yung ginagawa namin, we just request whatever we need and then binibigyan kami. Pag sinabi wala ng budget, so wala na rin kami. So, how, how, how could it be possible that we can integrate that one specifically on chapter nine, um, institutional development, institutional policy, institutional mechanism? So, what are the provisions there? Establishment, encouragement, um, establishment ng uh, TDOs. So, how, how possible is it that uh, we can include provision, uh, statement there? When such, for example, the RDIs should provide uh, specific allocation? Oh, yeah, how, how possible is that?
Sa ngayon, siya possible. Kasi, we are bound by the limits of the law. The law did not say that there will be appropriation for that event. Kasi pag mangangailangan appropriation, it means to add a legislative act. So, dapat, ang aamend natin, 'yung matasmo na ilalagay natin na da, sa para, para sumulat si DBM, dapat nakalagay mismo sa law na kailangan may separate appropriation for that purpose. But since this particular law do not say that you need, you will be given a separate appropriation for that purpose, talaga hindi po natin pwedeng uh, i-cover 'yung sinasabi niyo, ilalagay natin sa implementing rules, 'yung ganun. We cannot compel DBM to release some funds for that purpose kasi nilagay natin sa implementing rules when it is not in the law.
Now, uh, how about if, not, not really the DBM, but the RDI itself, na will have to allocate some funds out of like some...
Yes, sir, that's part of your answer, sir. Tech transfer protocol na po yun, sa policy na po talaga yan ang university. Hindi na po pwedeng compare niyo, eh, ng IRR na po.
Kasi nga, we are trying to propose that one, pero wala kaming bases.
This one is your basis that you need to establish.
Eh, we know establishment, but okay, we have established. Pero 'yung hihingi kami ng specific budget, like for example, five percent of RDE budget, um, ganun. Other universities do that. Uh, pero sabi lang, we are very hard, it's very hard to convince our university president, especially if we cannot uh, show something na parang ganun.
Actually, uh, as I mentioned earlier, technology transfer and IP, management of IP is, or is or should be an income generating activity, both for the researcher and the university. And as such, uh, ang, ang university may alam namang gayo 'yung mga fiduciary funds or 'yung income, which uh, the university may use at its discretion upon approval of the board. So, wala pong problema yun. And in fact, e- every now and then ang mga president nagpapa-approve sa amin ng mga realignment or mga additional funding. Uh, madali kong pa-appreciate sa board yung sa takikita nila na uh, essential siya sa operation ng inyong institution. Especially with, with the advent itong mga aako, activations ninyo, where in na very serious ang pagtingin dun sa inyong RDL activities. Malaki po 'yung point mark. And I believe, a no board member or no university president would withhold funding for activities to support their aako operation.
Yes, sir, but um, sometimes, uh, 'yung nangyayari, Yes, sir, but, um, sometimes, ah, 'yung nangyayari, um, if we, we propose some activities, for example, bigla na lang masasabi na, oh, sorry, wala nang, ah, budget 'yung research. Ubus na, so stayed na. Ah, what I mean here, na kung meron talaga magkalaan for IP office, offices, I mean, universities, na hindi siya attach for other activities, parang yun doon lang.
Ah, sabi nga po kanina, guideline two ng university, ah, and, ah, we can always withhold approval of the budget of the university at our level sa DOSD, kung hindi po magko-comply si budget officer and the president. In fact, yesterday, may isang university akong hindi in approve 'yung budget, because 'yung kanilang, ah, 'yung kanilang research budget is only 4% of the total budget. So, sabi ko, I will not approve, kahapon po may coordinate 'yung unatend lang, kulakan. Hindi po in approve 'yung budget nila, kasi 4% lang ng total budget ng university 'yung research. Pinadadagdagan ko, until comply na 'yung 10%, babalik po nila sa atin 'yung 4% approval.
Yes, sir, ah, yes, mayroong budget 'yung research. Yun nga lang, um, 'yung, 'yung tech transfer, wala, 'yung specific. So, we just share 'yung budget ng research, parang ganun. So, wala 'yung specific na naka-allocate talaga for tech transfer. So, whatever activities we have, kung mayroon kami maprotektahan, pinapasa lang namin sa research. Eh, ngayon, pag wala ng pera 'yung research, wala na rin kami.
Yes, correct. Kaya nga po, critical din po 'yung role ng vice president for research, kasi part and parcel po ng research activity, 'yung commercialization na rin yan.
Yes.
Ah, in fact, meron pong mga university ngayon, meron na nga ngayon mga vice president for, ah, IGB, eh, di ba? So, kasama rin po yan doon. So, I, I believe, we can discuss this at level po ng mga director ng DOSD now. We could make it a policy among us...
Yes, sir.
To require 'yung mga issueses to allocate, seriously allocate fund for that.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Yun rin lang 'yung saangat namin, napansin pa, makita kami, to assert our, our, ano, na, we should be given specific, um, allocation, para naman hindi mahangper 'yung operations ng office. Kasi nagestablish ang office, pero no corresponding, ah, allocation. Para naman ganun.
Aside from that po, I'm very happy to inform you that Yusek Geb gave me instruction na, ah, i-pursue 'yung tech transfer activities ng mga issueses. That promised me 5N, 4D, para lang i-push itong commercialization activities. Ah, I think this will work through for all the regions. Ganun naman kami, but may ginawang proposal sa isang region, may nangover namin, um, I believe masasama po.
Sorry, thank you, sorry, thank you.
Hihingi po tayo ng budget sa DOSD ka.
Actually, sir, the scenario is that, when the DBM released the budget for to the university, 'yung nakalagay lang is, meron extension, na 'yung research time. So, hindi nakalagay 'yung, 'yung para sa, sa IP or sa, sa tech transfer. So, 'yung sinasabi ni sir is, ah, ah, kung, kung, pero, kung pwedeng magkaroon ng commission na mato-allocate ng budget. So, in our case, previously, kasi we hindi pan-establish 'yung, 'yung management office, we are at the mercy of, ah, the research office. Kumbaga, ah, kung magkano na 'yung ibigay niya sa amin, yun lang, yun lang 'yung operation ng, ng office. Sa ngayon, we are still under the mercy of, ah, the research office. However, before they can allocate that to others, example, meron ganitong, ganitong I, isa slice na doon, 'yung IP before they can allocate. Parang ganun 'yung nangyayari sa amin. Kasi, ah, we, of course, the BPRE, ah, our BPRE tries to consider na, kahit magkaroon ng mga maraming researchers, kung wala namang tech transfer, wala rin. Okay. Ah, sir, meron, ang, ang lahat po ng issueses here, hindi nakakaroon ng strat planning.
Yes.
After punong strat planning, pinipresent po yan sa academic council at sakrasa, administrative council for approval. These are the values na po pwede po rin nyo tirace, 'yung concern ninyo, kung kakaligtayan 'yung specific unit nyo doon sa budget. Now, if hindi pa rin po pinansin sa academic council, sakra, admin council, you may write members of the board, support for 'yung, inyong faculty or, or, ah, non-academic, ah, region, to make representations, but hindi po sila represent for you, you could write the, the OSD Regional Director who sits sa board, and the DOS Regional Director may, ah, represent 'yung, 'yung concerned doon sa board for a while. And I assure you, pag sinabi po ng DOS Regional Director, hindi pwedeng isubukan. Just for clarification, sorry for the word mercy, ah, at the mercy. But, ah, sa amin, ah, sa ngayon, hindi na kami at the mercy. Kumbaga, sila, sila na 'yung nag, ah, kusa nabibigay sa amin. Ah, not only from the research, ah, budget, but of course, the extension also give us some of their, of their budget. Because our mandate, the IP and the tech transfer is to do the tech transfer, not only to commercialize, but also to do social responsibility in terms of trainings and other functions.
So, I think that is our last, ah, comment, yes? Ah, that ends our public hearing on the amendment of the IRR, of RA 10055. Yes, sir?
Akala 'yung private institution. We know this public hearing only yesterday, so I rushed to come here today. We did not hear about this, ah, ah, very short notice though, for us, from the private institutions. So, I feel only, I think only me, we is from private institution.
You just...
Yeah, also my colleagues from ITU.
You represent the private sector. Okay, so this, this has been a very fruitful day, ah, at this juncture, maybe here from the director, DOSD MD for these closing remarks, Dr. Skellis.
Um, closing, no? Anyway, ah, siguro gusto ko lang sabihin, I, I would like to thank, ah, the participants from this, ah, um, anong batao ko dito? Talagang very active region, ah, very active regions, covering, covering the Visayas, no? Eastern and Western Visayas, no? I, ah, maniwala kayo kanina, lumpot na lumpot ako nung dumating ako, kasi nakita ko aalog-alog tayo. When you, but when you started speaking your mind, wow! Parang nakita ko si Rowen, eh. The, you know, Director Rowen Gilohanga is, is one of the most eloquent speakers sa mga regional directors. Every time na may meeting kami, talagang substantial 'yung mga sinasabi niya. And, and I, I could sense that from each and every one of you. Ganun, pag ganun kaya talaga, eh, 'yan bablot talaga rin nyo dito, no? Ah, talagang, I, I just would like to thank you for giving all those inputs, no? Lahat po ng inyong sinabi, we, we took that in, ah, seriously, and we will consider that in finalizing po 'yung ating, ah, mga, ah, recommended improvements doon sa ating ginagawa. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, this would redound to the benefit of the people. And then, as I mentioned then, aside from, ah, aside from looking for, ah, a way to really bring the fruits of science and technology, ah, doon sa different levels ng ating clientele, meaning, ah, doon sa ating mga technologies for common good, for wel, for social welfare and all this. And at the same time, we should also consider a technologies that could be commercialized, meaning, ah, commercialized na meron talagang malaking sign ng peso. I believe, I, I, I share these ideals with Yusek Geb na, researchers and researchers should be generating, ah, income. Nakita natin yan sa ibang, sa mga ibang bansa, talaga namang pinagkikitaan po nila ang kanila mga intellectual property. Ah, hindi dapat mahuli ang Pilipinas, kasi we have, we have no shortage of talent, sabi ko nga. I, I always tell these sa lahat ng region na pinupuntahan ko, ah, there is no shortage of talent in the regions. It just so happened that in the past decades, masyadong na, na monopolize ng mga areas na highly urbanized, 'yung access to, ah, timely and use timely and accurate information. Kaya tayo nauunahan, but with the, with the advent of IT, na ipakita po ng mga regions na, even sa mga board exams, ang nagtatap na ngayon ay mga taga-regions. Isang po itong magandang indication that new and innovative technologies could really come from the regions, and that's what we are doing now, that's what we would like to show, and that's why we are here today, to help each one bring the fruit of science and technology to a higher level. Yun po ang pangarap natin lahat para sa atin, at sana po, ay, huwag kayong bibitaw sa amin, kung kami po may mga pagpukula ngayon relative sa timely invitations and preparations, we would like to apologize. But, ah, we would like to keep you as partners of the government, as partners of the people that we serve in trying to bring a better Philippines. Magandang maganda.
Now, lunch. May, we request everyone, na dito muna sa harang, para magkara naman tayo ng group. And then afterwards, we shall proceed outside. I think the food is already prepared. Siguro po 'yung mga matatangkad sa, sa, sa likod, para...
Meron deliberations, sir, after the mood public meeting. Ako na po post na nila, ako kaya dito sa Japong, lahi the afternoon, kasi tatapos na 'yung first ano. Pero siya namang... May...
Hindi tayo buo.
Hindi tayo...
Anong date? Kasi ang, ano, Yusek, eh, doon magperma...